Eighty-six to two thousand seven.
Is that how you met?
No, we actually met in school there in nineteen eighty-two. We actually did a lot of jobs together, you know, we we were kind of a husband-wife team everywhere we went through in our entire lives.
Are you making coffee?
I am. Is it warm now?
I was gonna throw out your open cup and put mine in.
I didn't know mayor had septic in the park.
I watch my flea exercise over the next twenty minutes. I'm supposed to stand up and walk around, so.
Oh, okay, yeah. Doctor's orders?
No, doctor's orders.
What about you? You gonna travel more now that you're stepping down from the council?
Yeah, we're going to Hawaii and Bangor.
Welcome to you, yeah. First time to Hawaii?
First time, yeah.
Yeah, that's exciting.
Yeah, we're gonna cruise from California to Hawaii.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good. So you're gonna stay in California a while before you fly over Hawaii, or?
Oh, maybe, but probably not. We'll take another separate trip to California.
Yeah, my daughter, uh, lives in Pacific Grove, California. Nice up there.
Yeah.
Sixty-five, fifty-five to sixty-five. Three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Yeah.
And then she works inland maybe twenty miles and then it's like ghastly hot, you know.
Yeah.
Triple-digit heat.
Yeah. Mary, my wife lived in California for many years and where she lived and where she worked again, also the temperature is very different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, one kid, one, my son's in Utah, but he goes all over the west to fight wildland firefighters, you know, forest fires out there.
I mean, business.
It's crazy.
Yeah.
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 Each year gets worse.
All right, good evening, everybody.
Recording in progress.
Good mor- good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the Mansfield Town Council. It is August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. I'm calling the meeting to order. Ms. Chain, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Coleman.
Here.
Cotton.
Here.
Kiefern. Letrico.
Here.
Moran.
Here.
Sharon.
Here.
Shaken. Tameko.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, um. Uh, Mr. Shaken just joined us. Uh, next thing on the agenda is an opportunity for the public to address the council. I assume that's you, Ms. Cattula. Please come forward. Um, I don't need to restate the rules for you, I don't believe. Five minutes, uh, state your name and address and and I know we have received some written communications from you, excuse me, already.
Good evening. The property line request document from Dad and me is in tonight's petitions, requests and communications section of the meeting, item D. So I wish to comment on that and encourage the town council's approval. The request is for a property line agreement to include.
Excuse me, Ms. Cattula, would you say your name and address?
I'm sorry. Catherine L. Cattula, one thirty-five Maple Road, stores Mansfield, Connecticut. The request is for a property line agreement to include the small rectangle of land, zero point one five four acre, referred to as parcel A, that was cut from the lot seven A of Maple Woods, phase one that became one thirty-five Maple Road, stores Mansfield, Connecticut, and the narrow strip of land between parcel A and our southeast property lined two and including the stone wall on the northwest edge of Old Bennett Road, referred to as parcel B, rough approximation, zero point four two acre. A more extensive explanation, as well as diagrams and photos of the points, are in our document, which has a link in the town council agenda for tonight. Basically, no one else has or would be able to have access to this land because the only way to access it is from our property. These small portions of land are surrounded by natural and historic borders. Parcel A is surrounded on the Maple roadside by a stone wall. Parcel B, the narrow strip, is bordered on the Old Bennett roadside by a very old stone wall and very old barbed wire at the top edge of a drop in elevation to Old Bennett Road. This is a natural border. As background, parcel A was originally cut from lot seven A to be used as a parking lot for the Old Bennett Road trail. However, this is not feasible because a large section of the beautiful, very old stone wall would have to be removed. The sight line onto Maple Road is not sufficient for cars leaving that proposed parking lot. There is a large difference in grade between the exterior of the stone wall along Maple Road and the inside of the wall, which would require substantial regrading, so is not feasible. Parcel A tends to be damp, so would be problematic for a parking lot. Old Bennett Road has not been used as a trail. It is not maintained, it is overgrown, and has fallen trees across it. As a trail, Old Bennett Road would be a liability for the town as a fall risk and as a source of ticks and the diseases they carry. If parcel A and parcel B were to be integrated into lot seven A with a property line agreement, we would be able to maintain the land which the town has not been able to maintain, maintain the frontage along Maple Road, which the town has not been able to maintain, clear the land of noxious weeds, including stinging nettle, brambles, and Japanese knotweed, also called Korean bamboo, autumn olive, olive, and Asiatic bittersweet, which are non-native invasive weeds. We would be able to expose the Maple roadside of the exquisite curve of the stone wall, which will increase the beauty of Maple Road. Reintegrating parcel A and parcel B into lot seven A would make an irregularly shaped lot more regular with a more logical boundary. We would not subdivide our property. Parcel A would be ideal for growing our Sheldon cultivar rhubarb, which thrives in morning shade, afternoon sun, and plenty of moisture. Thank you for your consideration. We look forward to a positive decision because this property line agreement benefits the land, the town, and us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes, from the public, who wishes to address the council? Seeing nobody, uh, we will close the opportunity for the public and move to the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. Two of them are for scheduling a public hearing, and the third is the town council minutes. Mr. Shaken?
I move adoption of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'd like to pull an item.
Which item?
Um, the item A. Pull and put on a new business is item C, which is the ordinance.
Right, okay. Uh, the the rules say that once a request has been made, it will be granted, so uh, we now have two items left. Schedule, uh, number, letter B and letter C. All those in favor of those consent agendas amended, please raise your hand. All right, we've adopted it. Um, the next item on our calendar is the Affordable Housing Committee Annual Update. And I know a number of us have been, uh, really anxiously awaiting uh, your report, so. Welcome. Mr. Ellsworth, do you want to introduce this group, or do you?
Um.
Let them introduce themselves.
Since I have a large group, let them introduce themselves. I just, since I didn't connect with Paul beforehand, if you're minimal to this, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll I'll advance the slides for you. Just somebody give me this signal. Okay, let me get this.
As long as the green light's on, you're.
Now it's on. It's a pleasure to see you all and to hear myself talk.
I'm I'm Will Beagle.
Um, yes.
Uh, Sheila Amder and.
Sheila Amder.
For the record, you need to speak into the microphone.
Okay, Sheila Amder.
Martina Wharton.
Will Beagle.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. You can have the first slide, please. Uh, the sec- next slide after that. Before we get into the details of what our committee has done over the past year, allow us to briefly describe the size and scope of Connecticut's housing crisis and that of Mansfield in particular. This, of course, is the the economic, social, and political context in which we're operating and a large part of the reason that our committee even exists. Connecticut is the most constrained housing market in the nation. The numbers vary, but most estimates are that thirty-five or fifty percent, thirty-five to fifty percent of Connecticut's households are considered cost burdened, meaning they spend at least thirty percent of their income on housing costs. An estimated one hundred and nineteen thousand people of those households are severely cost burdened, paying more than half their monthly monthly income on rent if they can find a place to live. The impact of this kind of shortage is, of course, far-reaching. It limits workforce mobility, increases business operating costs, and generally hampers economic growth. That's not to mention increasing the amount of homelessness and housing instability, bringing with them all their negative social consequences. Mansfield is no stranger to these phenomena. One study prepared for the state says we would need to still add between a hundred and seventy-three and six hundred and fifty-three affordable units to achieve the town's fair share of the region's need. We have, in fact, approved a total of a hundred and twenty-five deed-restricted affordable units since twenty twenty, but only about seventy have come online. Currently, in the eyes of the state, six point oh eight percent of our six thousand nine hundred and fifty-six housing units are affordable. That's much better than many of the surrounding towns, but still far short of the state's ten percent target. Since its creation, we have amassed four point nine million dollars in the town's Affordable Housing Trust Fund and have spent virtually none of it. I I'm, we put that slide up there so you can see the numbers on affordability, the twelve percent and twenty-seven percent numbers of the ones that I was referring to of the extremely cost-burdened and the cost-burdened folks. Thirty-nine percent of the of our homes in town are occupied by renters. Locally, data from the Partnership for Strong Communities, which is what that is, estimates that twenty-seven percent of Mansfield's households are in the severely cost-burdened group. Our housing environment is heavily influenced by the demand for off-campus rentals around the University of Connecticut. This demand has exacerbated exacerbated, sorry, several problems. It has driven up the number of single-family residences that have been converted into student rentals. It has driven up rents and home prices throughout town. This has reduced the number of affordable homes available for purchase by young families wishing to settle and work here or by senior citizens trying to downsize locally. One consequence of this phenomenon is a falling school population and a dip in the middle of our population curve where young and middle-aged families ought to be. This is not a healthy trend. The high demand has made it nearly impossible for people in the lowest-income groups, those making fifty to sixty percent of the average median income, to afford a rental. So you can appreciate how eager our committee members are to make even a small dent in this problem. And while we're pleased with the number of affordable units have that have come online and the additional ones that are on the way, we're the nevertheless nevertheless concerned about the negligible amount of progress we've made in providing housing for the population that needs it most. Few of the incoming units that are being built are geared for the lowest-income groups. So what have we done in the past year? We'll take the next slide, please. In the town's run-up to adopting a new plan of conservation and development, we have updated our recommended strategies and objectives in keeping with the best practices and priorities based on the need. We attempted to communicate that need to the public in an event we called Affordable Housing one oh one. The turnout was limited, but we made some important connections with the town's social services and senior citizen directors who see the effects of the housing shortage firsthand. We continued our effort to educate our committee members by undertaking an ongoing program of reading and guest speakers, such as the one we had last week, with a representative of the Local Initiatives Support Corporation and Affordable Housing Consulting and Financial Organization. Next slide, please. One important way Mansfield can approach its target goal of ten percent affordable housing is by encouraging the developers of rental projects to provide a higher percentage of affordable units than the fifteen percent required by our zoning code. This reduces the number of market rate units we need to add to approach the state's ten percent goal. It brings the not numerator up versus the denominator. To that end, over the course of many weeks, we proposed two ordinances based on different state statutes, only to learn that neither was applicable to the mixed-income affordable projects and neither was necessary to enable the town to grant tax relief to developers or landlords. We subsequently were able to articulate a policy by which the council could negotiate with landlords to grant such relief. It was enshrined in a resolution approved by you folks last November twenty-eight. We have yet to develop a program publicizing the availability of this opportunity to prospective developers. Uh, next slide, please. Going forward, we hope to use in, uh, we hope to be useful in helping evaluate any new housing projects that come forward. We wouldn't be surprised if Habitat for Humanity, which just closed on the property on North Eagleville Road, eventually approaches the town for some sort of assistance from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The same is true for the potential development on acreage at Holinko Estates. Those things are sort of in the wind, on the way, maybe. We also recognize the need to find land suitable for projects that add to the inventory of the lowest-income groups. Land. These are the ones, these lowest-income groups' housing are the ones least likely to be proposed by for-profit developers. The Goodwin School site is one we should consider. Um, we will continue to our effort to develop additional financial tools and programs that can be used to incentivize creation of more deed-restricted units for all income groups, including seniors. And the last slide, please. Actually, technically, the second slide. What this all adds up to, we believe, is the need for a stronger commitment from the town council to make something happen. The need is great and and available help from the state and other agencies is plentiful. We appreciate that the council has budgeted for an additional town planner to arrive the first of next year. We hope this person can spearhead the effort to marry the town's concept of an appropriate affordable housing project with developers, landowners, financial institutions, and consultants able to bring it to life. There are developers in this area looking for opportunities. This is a way Mansfield can take more steps in their direction. Perhaps of equal importance, the town needs to engage with the University of Connecticut in meeting the local housing need. Its policies and practices over the years have helped to reduce housing availability for the middle of our population curve and those in greatest need. Plans to expand the student population could do even more. The university's power to help build capacity, housing capacity, by supplying land and infrastructure greatly exceeds that of the town. The entire region and Mansfield in particular needs its state legislators and UConn as creative, collaborating partners in better balancing and aligning the local housing needs with those of the university. We urge the town council to continue delivering that message until it wins UConn's help. And that will be the close of our report. You sure can.
Yes, I'd just like to add, um, I wanted to thank the the town council and the, uh, for, uh, allowing me to serve on the Affordable Housing Committee and serving as its first chair and to thank Jennifer Kaufman for indefatigable work, uh, to, you know, as we've tried to move through the the weeds of of the of the difficulty of doing this. Um, since I no longer live in Mansfield, I live in Coventry because I couldn't find the housing I needed here. Uh, although my heart is always here, I'm leaving the committee. Um, I think Mansfield, perhaps more than any other town in our area, has an excellent opportunity to significantly increase the supply of affordable housing. The council has already adopted the priorities in terms of the populations that need to be served that we recommended to you, I think, well over a year ago. Um, and now is a very opportune time to set a goal, and I'm hoping what the committee, and I think what the committee is going to be doing, is to recommending to you a a target population, establishing a financial incentive through the Housing Trust Fund, and most importantly, uh, if the the council and and however it might do this could allocate land on which housing could be built. This could really jumpstart. It takes years to develop affordable housing, but if you pump-prime, uh, the upfront development cost and there's land available and you have a cooperative planning and zoning commission, uh, we can go much faster than other communities. Um, the last thing I'll just note is that ten percent goal is really only a floor. It's the floor that you reach so that a developer can't come in and use A thirty G to, um, you know, to to not abide by your zoning regulations. And so I hope Mansfield is, uh, and I think some of the, what what, uh, Paul talked about, particularly the population drop of of families, you know, the twenty-five, what is it, the twenty-five to fifty-five-year-old?
Yeah.
Group is pretty alarming. Um, so Mansfield is a, with the public support, I think, that's out there, uh, I think could be a leader in, uh, becoming a community in which people from all walks of life, all professions, uh, can live and thrive. And, um, I look forward to reading about your great, um, achievements.
Any other members? Any bad questions for us?
Mr. Shaken?
I was, I'm happy to hear, and I guess I didn't appreciate fully that we, with the exception of Eagleville Green, which is in that number, that we had achieved that high amount of permitted and then online new deed-restricted units, and that's that's good. I thought we were farther behind than that. Um, and and just at that ten percent floor, obviously, it moves around as the number of housing units increase or decrease, but it seems like we are not as far off from it, um, as we might have thought we were a couple of years ago when we formed the committee, right, that we've we've had some progress.
Well, actually, numerically, we haven't.
We're still, right, we're at six percent still because the number of units has gone up.
Yeah.
Um.
And and I don't know, a few years ago, before this committee existed, the town was at about ten percent. Then the Oaks happened and, you know.
Right, right. That was before the downtown was was open. The the question that I have, the the sort of conundrum here with, that I think all municipalities have, even ours, where we're trying to build a substantial amount of affordable housing and without a lot of resistance from elected officials and frankly, from the community, um, is that the way that it's sort of socially acceptable right now to build affordable housing, which is mixed income, um, to not put everyone with low incomes all together in one place, but instead to build projects like we just built at Eagleville Green, where people with low incomes are living next to people with higher incomes and their kids are playing together and it increases the opportunity in a community that, there's all sorts of reasons why as a social policy, forgetting about how a development can can make money or survive financially, that that the housing world has shifted to building places like that instead of building the other public publicly-supported housing that that our housing authority supports in town, which is all affordable. But it makes it much more difficult for towns to, who are trying to build up to their ten percent goal to get there because every unit, every every project like that that you build and fund, you are adding to the number of market rate units at the same time that you're adding to the number of affordable units. So how 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 have you guys wrestled with that as a committee and trying to figure out how the policy in our town should move forward?
Well, one of the things that I actually mentioned it here is this this new ability to negotiate with developers could be used, I think, not just to get them to build more affordable units, but to give them even a better break when they build units that can be inhabited by thirty to forty or fifty percent AMI residents. That way, you start to meet the need the that we we're not fulfilling at all, really, right now, or, you know, one one development. So that's one tool, and sure, Sheila.
I I I think, and we met with a couple of nonprofit developers, and with what I we talked about, which was if you help, you know, if there's a a money, uh, however we do it, because I don't think we know how we're gonna do it yet, or the town doesn't know whether it's a loan or it's not, right, grant upfront, that helps with a lot of those pre-development costs, and there's land. You'll have nonprofit developers who can basically build just as they did at Eagleville Green because only eight of those units are market-rated at Eagleville Green, and the rest are of various levels of affordability. And remember, affordability at eighty percent is still a fairly high income. And we're talking, you know, we're trying, relatively speaking, so we're talking about trying to get, you know, into the, as they did there, um, people at at different income levels. Um, as many working families are at fifty or sixty percent or even less, and many elderly are even less than that.
Right, and that's the other way to to to, that some towns have done this, is that they've built age-restricted affordable housing, and that's and and that's something that we've, um, we haven't done, in part because we're, um, I'm not sure why, but we haven't done it here. Um, but it's one of the ways that towns have kind of gotten around some of the.
And it's a it's a low-hanging fruit, if you want to call it that. I mean, yeah, it's a, it's very unlikely to get a lot of pushback from the community.
Right.
Um, if you have the land.
Well, for good for for good reason or not, I suppose.
Yeah.
My my other question is just sort of about the sort of lowercase a affordable housing. I know the committee's been rightly focused on deed-restricted affordable housing, which is the the sort of state, the state target that we're trying to achieve. But I I would say the reality is that purchasing any home, with this exception of some of of homes in very, very bad shape in town, is wildly unaffordable and in Connecticut, is wildly unaffordable right right now for anyone making a hundred, a hundred and fifty percent of area median income, which is around a hundred thousand dollars, right? You the the amount of money that a quote-unquote starter home costs in this town right now is what a quote-unquote very nice house cost in this town seven or eight years ago, and that's true across Connecticut. And so how do you envision the lowercase a affordable housing and the market generally reacting if we were to say theoretically, hypothetically, hit our deed-restricted, deeply affordable unit goal and housing development goal in town? How would that affect the market generally, and would it make things affordable for families who wouldn't qualify for those programs?
I don't think it would make a dent, frankly.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, you know, even, even the other, there's a, a kind of a more practical problem. If you take a small starter home and put it on the market, you're going to get 15 calls from the out-of-town developers wanting to snatch that up as a cash purchase. We'll give it, we'll take it, no inspections, we'll take it as-is, give you a top dollar for it. A lower-income family that has to go out and get a mortgage and figure out how to pay for it and get a down payment together, they don't have a chance to compete for a lot of these, these homes that go on the market.
And as someone, sorry, Ron, and this is my last thing, as someone who sold one of these houses three years ago, it wasn't developers that made those offers, it was people, older people.
The cash offer.
Who had cash, who didn't need inspections, and that's become the norm. I have a family member who just bought a house, who at this point was told, "You can't do inspections, no one will take your offer," because you're, there's going to be 10 offers from people who are willing to waive them. And so I think there's just enough people out, and there's such a limited stock out there that it's not even develop, not even investors that are making these offers anymore. It's, it's basically how it goes to sell a house.
They stay on the market for about a week, week or nine days, and.
Mr. Shaken. And Mr. Sharon.
Yeah. Off the top of your head, you, how many lowercase a, affordable housing rental units are there in town?
I don't know. I think Jennifer knows the number.
Meaning 10, meaning 100, meaning?
That's mostly the, it's mostly that, it's mostly the housing that would be through the Housing Authority at Halinko Estates, at Wright's Way, that's, you know, senior housing, at Juniper Village, which is senior housing. I don't think there's.
Much of that is deed-restricted by, for income, though.
Those are all deed-restricted.
Right, but if you're looking at places like Knollwood.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking about.
I don't know what the rents are at Knollwood. I suspect they're not low income, but I, I don't know.
Oh, and you get what you pay for, too.
Jennifer might.
Yeah, she's got numbers, good.
I'm happy to try to look into this, and I know this has been an issue that another council member has been interested in, is how many lowercase affordable units do we have in our town? And it really depends on what you consider that to be. I do know that the rent, I was just speaking with Jessica St. Louis about the rents at Renwood, and those have gone up $800 per unit over the past two years. This is sort of an anecdotal information from her, but she was telling me that, and those units, you know, they're not, they're not the standard. In addition, on top of that rent, you have to pay for your utilities, and, and those are all not very well, they're not insulated, and.
And I would think some significant number of people who are occupying those and paying those rents are students who are sharing units.
There are quite a few families in, in those areas.
And I've been looking at White Oak, which is right near me, and I know that one of those units was just sold, one of the units, which means one quarter of one of those raised ranch houses for 125, which sounded like a pretty affordable initial investment for a family. And I, I watched one day, and there were 15 kids getting off the school bus, so I know there are families in those places. I really, I've wondered if you have thought at all about finding a way to subsidize some of these existing apartment developments that are not deed-restricted, if we could negotiate with them to take some town money, some affordable housing money, in exchange for putting deed restrictions on some of them? Have you talked about that?
Talked about that, yeah. Rather than, you know, having to build from the ground up, you just get some property owner to say, "Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll renovate, we'll bring you things up to standards, we'll deed-restrict for 30 or 40 years, or whatever the term is, and yeah, away we go." With, with, with a tax break from the town and maybe some Affordable House Trust Fund money to finance renovations. Yeah, we've talked about that. We don't have a, a process for someone easily to come forward and say, "I want your, you know, I want your renovation program." The staff has to handle all that stuff.
Has there been any attempt to reach the condo associations in some of these older places, or to reach the corporate owners?
Should be on the list when we get our new planner.
One of the things we envision with the new, when the new planner gets here, is for someone to be, I call it the point of the spear, to go and get the landowners, get financial institutions, get developers, try to bring them together in a meaningful way so that can we, using the, the town's vision of what it would like to see built, can we find a landowner and a financier and a developer to make these things happen on a site that we've identified? Yeah, and that's what we would like to see happen, is someone to pull things, pull things together. The same with respect to the university.
The university at this point is not going to, they are, they're not going to stand in the way of development in town, but they are not, they are actually pulling back on their own building budgets, so I'm, I'm not holding out any great hope, although we talk with them on a regular basis about these things.
I will say that in my department, we probably meet with developers maybe two to five times a week, and people who are interested in building in, in Mansfield. And Connecticut is one of the few states that's, that has put a lot of money towards affordable housing. So I do think you're going to get private developers who are going to be doing more affordable housing over and above the 30%, because they can get the low-income housing tax credits, there's other programs that are available to them, so, but we met with LISC, and the acronym escapes me right now, but you have it in your, and, you know, this takes time. You know, the Standard, which was probably one of the most well-capitalized projects in our town, took over five years, and not, that doesn't even account all of the pre-development stuff. So it, this, this is a little bit of an exercise in patience, unless you're looking to, you know, quickly buy a deed restriction. But building housing takes time, and when you're looking at all of these financing programs, you have to report out to the different institutes, institutions that you're getting the funding from, so.
Local Initiatives Support Corporation was who we met. And they, they do, they actually were involved in Eagleville Green early on, I think they didn't, didn't have to go all the way with them. There are lots of organizations out there that can offer assistance and, and consult with you and keep you out of the, out of the weeds, once you have land and, you know, infrastructure. And those, Mansfield has more than all the towns around here, but the real control of that, you know, is the university, so, except for maybe south-ended town.
Mr. Shaken.
I was just going to say that the, it's impossible for us as a town to fix a problem that's nationwide. We can do what we can here, and we should, and we are, I think, but, but I was at a conference last week, and there was a presentation about the housing affordability crisis nationwide, and the presenter talked about units that were $600 a month, and everyone like gasped, and she was like, "Well, if you're from a market where there's never been a unit for $600 a month," she understands that a quarter of the country, that's affordable for a quarter of the country, right? And so we, we certainly haven't had apartment units in Mansfield for less than $600 a month since, in a very, very long time. But, but there were units like that next door in Willimantic until recently. But my, my guess is that nowhere is ever, is even close to that in places that used to be in the $1,000 range that were affordable for a lot of people are now very, very much higher than that, like Renwood.
Mr. Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, the elephant in the room is the University of Connecticut. It is unique to this town. The university plans on, from what I understand, adding more students, increasing enrollment right here in stores. The university does not plan on building any housing on their campus. The university wants affordable housing for its students, and it's asking Mansfield to provide that source. So it is a conundrum, and it is going to take some pretty good negotiations with the university to have them work with this town and help us solve this problem. We cannot solve, we can't build our way out of this problem with the University of Connecticut having such demand on our housing. Thanks for recognizing that.
Well, to the extent that the University of Connecticut is a component of state government, which is making an awful lot of noise about the need for more housing, you would think that, that someone maybe in the governor's office might like talk to the Board of Trustees and say, "Folks, see what you can do. Here's a big university, big university, surrounded by this little town that, that's living with the consequences of every university decision." So it just seems to me as a matter of ethics or conscience or something that, that there ought to be at least a gesture in the direction of the town to, to add, to, you know, to provide some of this missing middle that we need.
And the, the, the part of the university that we don't ever talk about is staff.
And where do they live?
Because there are, there are, everybody talks about university professors as high-paid people, but they constitute about half of the staff at the university, and the rest of the staff is generally much lower-paid. So, and it isn't just, I mean, there are thousands of them, and they can't find housing here either. So, I mean, we've talked with the university about how much better it would be if their graduate students could live locally, if their new faculty could live locally, if there's, and they're very understanding and sympathetic.
Talk is cheap.
Yes, exactly. But part, part of my, my concern is that we always talk about building new, and I really wonder if there wouldn't be a way that, that's more environmentally sustainable to use some of the existing housing to, to encourage greater affordability, availability, so.
Yeah, let them come to us.
I mean.
They have to come to us, we can't go to them.
Oh, we do go to them, we do go to them.
But I mean, they don't want us, yeah. I'm getting all.
We, we can, we can go to them, and we can be, do a better job at, you know, that could come at a staff level where we're advertising, you know, what we want to do. However, these are private landowners, right? And they're, they're there, they're not there, most of them are, live out of town, and they're there so that they can make a profit. And, you know, that's what most landlords do, right? It's not, it's not bad, it's not, it just is what it is. So they have to, it has to be attractive enough for them to want to restrict their property, to want to renovate their property in a certain way. So it, it's not just as easy as saying, you know, "Let's put a deed restriction." I know you know, all know that, but it, it's complicated.
Right. Any other questions from council members? Ms. Cotton, Mr. Letrico? Anybody else? Okay, seeing nothing, I will thank the, the committee for its hard work and for sticking with us. This is obviously a very long-term and frustrating project, but, but we really do appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
And we'll miss Sheila. Okay, so moving on.
Mayor.
Mr. Shaken.
I move that we recess the Town Council and convene as the Water Pollution Control Authority.
Yes, the reason this public hearing motion is on, is, was not in the consent calendar is that it requires WPCA to act. So, Mr. Shaken moves, is there a second to move into WPCA? Mr. Coleman seconds. All those in favor say, raise your hand. Okay, we are the WPCA, Water Pollution Control Authority. Mr. Shaken, would you?
Yes. Move effective today to schedule a public hearing at 7:10 PM at the Town Council's regular meeting on September 8th, 2025, to solicit public comment regarding the proposed sewer rates for FY25/26 that would be billed to users of the UConn and Willimantic sewer systems in the town of Mansfield.
Do we have a second? Mr. Coleman seconds. All those in, any discussion? You want to speak to your motion?
Uh, this is a public hearing, so we will have plenty of discussion about it after the public hearing.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. We've got a public hearing date set, good. Now, the report of the town, no, we have the, the ordinance for obtaining goods and services, that also has a motion. Mr. Shaken?
Yeah, I'd like to move to schedule a public hearing for 7:00 PM at the Town Council's regular meeting on September 8th, 2025. I'm sorry, we need to move, you're correct.
Move this out.
Move, first, I need to move to recess as the Mansfield Water Pollution Control Authority and reconvene as the Town Council.
Is there a second? Mr. Coleman seconds. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, we're out now. Now make the second.
Yes, I'd like to move to schedule a public hearing for 7:00 PM at the Town Council's regular meeting on September 8th, 2025, to solicit public comment regarding the proposed amendments to the ordinance for obtaining goods and services, Chapter 76 of the Mansfield Code.
Is there a second? Mr. Coleman seconds? You wish to speak to your motion?
Only to say that the, the details of this change were in tonight's Finance Committee packet, I don't think the, I'm sorry, there is a red line copy here, but there was some more summary in the Finance Committee information. That committee meeting has, was canceled because we had a scheduling conflict with one of our three members, and as the council tends to do, since our committees only have three people, if everybody can't make it, we try to find a time when everyone can. And so this is a motion to get, because we're not meeting in two weeks, we want to get the public hearing on the agenda so we don't have to delay even further. The other thing that was in the consent agenda, same thing, but there will be a Finance Committee meeting prior to this public hearing, where we will get a ton of information about this from staff and can have a conversation before we get to the public hearing. So if things had been perfect, we would have had that conversation before the public hearing, but we will instead have the public hearing, and then if there are things that the council wishes to change from what staff are proposing, that will follow the public hearing on the ordinance that come out of the Finance Committee. So we're looking at meeting either this Thursday or next Thursday, I think, and we'll post that date as soon as we hear from all the Finance Committee members about their availability.
Mr. Coleman.
Yeah, just a couple of comments quick here. This ordinance was created in 2009 and then readjusted in 2016. The ordinance was looked at very closely, I believe, because of this superintendent debacle, and this is actually, the red line is actually striking out several of those safeguards, and I am not in favor of removing that safeguard, I'm in favor of increasing the amount to $35,000, but that safeguard was put.
But we're not discussing that at this time.
That's right.
The only topic on the agenda is the setting of the public hearing.
Well, I, I understand that, but I just want to let you know what's coming.
I'm not surprised, but we will proceed. So vote on the public hearing. All those in favor of the public hearing motion, please raise your hand. Okay, we are unanimous, thank you. Now, Town Manager's Report. Now, I have been challenged to keep this meeting, end this meeting earlier than 8:21, and the topics on the rest of our agenda, the Town Manager and reports and comments of council members, and the reports of council committees have the tendency to stretch us out a bit, so I'm asking everybody to keep an eye on the time. Go ahead, Mr. Ailsworth, and I know you're anxious to go home too.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. All right, so a few items to, to call out from my written report. Very excited to share that Chandler Rose, who's been serving for some time as the assessor in Wyndham and has been serving in interim capacity, is our assessor here, including working with existing staff to help us complete our town-wide revaluation project. He is now the town of Mansfield's assessor. If you haven't met Chandler yet, please stop by and say hi. He's really enthusiastic about the professional work that he does, and really excited for the, the assistance that our residents are going to receive from the assessor's office or any questions they have about their, their property's valuation. He's, he's a real subject matter expert, and it's a real benefit to the town that we've been able to secure his services for this very important role. So welcome, Chandler. A little later this week, we're going to be holding our kickoff meeting with EDM Studios, who's been selected to help us with the next phase of our municipal facility master planning work, looking at the municipal services main campus here, as well as our senior center. It's going to be a very robust process, playing out over many months, and so, again, this is just the kickoff, but very excited that this process is beginning in earnest now. And of course, as a reminder, it's being funded with a grant we received from the Community Investment Fund, CIF. Everybody's very well aware, it's already been mentioned a couple times tonight, referring to the Standard at Four Corners, but that project is in the final stretch of, well, construction. of, well, construction, but also the, the land use and building code approvals that it needs. They, they're striving to have tenants moving in middle of this month. And so the next few days is going to be a flurry of activity at their end, Landmark Properties, that is. And I know that our building and housing department personnel, as well as our planning and zoning, planning and development personnel, they've been basically living over there, providing a heck of a service, being as accommodating as possible while making sure that other projects that needed to be reviewed, other applicants, other clients in town are getting tended to as well. So it's a large project, certainly one that people have been anxious to see it get completed. And with the arrival of, or return of Yukon students here in just a number of days, a lot's going to change once, once that, that property is more or less fully occupied. On a related note, I wanted to share that town officials and Yukon officials, we continue to talk regularly and candidly about concerns we have about pedestrian safety in particular. It's about 750 feet of frontage that extends from the edge of the parcel owned by Landmark, the standard, down to the Four Corners, about 750 feet that currently there's, there's no trail because the adjacent parcel, the one that was to be developed into a project called The Villages, another multifamily housing development, a trail that was going to be continuous from one property to the other, that trail has not been built. And so Landmark, for its part, for its project, the standard constructed, constructed a trail and a bridge over wetland crossing, or crossing over wetland that right now basically terminates an impassable point until the trail's finished. So, so we're working with, with Yukon, we're talking to DOT, we're of course talking to Landmark, trying to figure out what solutions can be put in place in the near term, practical solutions to improve safety, everything from trying to figure out how we might be able to most effectively utilize the recently striped bike lane on 195, to signage that alerts both pedestrians and motorists to the, to the dangers of being on that shoulder. So we're continuing to, to work with everybody involved and we certainly want to make sure that everybody stays safe and recognizing that there is going to be a lot of activity, foot traffic, bike or otherwise, going from the standard toward campus and frankly, vice versa. So we'll have a much better handle of what those movement patterns are once it's fully occupied. Right now, it's, it's something I've educated guessing, but certainly a very important topic that we're working with Yukon on and our, and our partners across the board.
Is there bus service?
Yes, so WRTD, they've amended the bus routes. There will be service to the standard. One of the options or possible strategies we've, we've been talking about and exploring is the potential for enhanced public transportation, so additional service just to improve the convenience. Getting to the Yukon campus from the standard, that doesn't seem to be the issue. I think it's a direct shot. It's a five-minute ride from the standard to Yukon's, my understanding. But when you want to come from Yukon back, it's a little bit different. It's more like 45 minutes with the stops. And so one of the concerns folks have is whether or not people will do the, the safe thing and wait for the bus, or if they'll, you know, do other means. There are, of course, other means like Uber and Lyft and some people will surely try to drive a private vehicle and park closer to campus. It'll probably be all the above that people do. I think Landmark believes that the amount of pedestrian traffic, given the distance from campus, will not be as robust as, as some of the concerns suggest, but we'll know a heck of a lot better what people are actually going to do in a few weeks, once they're living there.
We hear two things, that students don't like to walk and that students are walking and that are in danger. So I mean, I'm not quite sure who you, who you talk about.
I want to make sure that the council knows that we're finalizing our planning and starting to promote the fifth year of the Local Government Academy. It's going to kick off in September, so looking forward to that program. Hopefully, we get a lot of interest from our, from our residents, community members. I think every member of the council that I've talked to is very well aware that the Tool Library, which is very, very popular, Mansfield Public Library, it's one of the innovative things we're doing, gets a lot of attention. And one of the ways it's got some attention outside the, the sort of the normal is, New York Times has now recognized our Tool Library, our very own Caitlin Epling, Assistant Library Director, longtime member of the Mansfield Public Library team. She was quoted in the New York Times, which doesn't happen every day. So kudos to Caitlin, but kudos to all members of the, the team for, that's the Tool Library, but the Toy Library, all the different things that Mansfield Public Library is doing to meet the needs of our residents and the, and the larger community that we serve, larger region that we serve. A few words on insurance-supported memberships. The council's meeting on September 8th, obviously this is a topic that's attracted a lot of interest and concern from residents and particular people that take advantage of insurance-supported memberships right now over at the Mansfield Community Center. Our negotiations with Tivity, which is the vendor for Silver Sneakers, and Optum, who's the vendor for Renew Active, we continue to have very productive, fruitful conversations, conversations and negotiations that neither vendor had previously expressed a willingness to do before we signaled in a very formal way with council support, the intention to discontinue our participation in those programs. So looking forward to the council's meeting on September 8th where we can provide, hopefully, a more comprehensive debrief at that time and, and staff recommendations as to the council's action that was taken back, back in June. So optimistic that we'll be able to arrive at terms that make sense for us to continue with those insurance-supported memberships with council support, because that will require council support. Want to make sure folks know the Community Center's annual maintenance week is coming up. It's August 18th through the 24th. It's going to require closing of the facility during the week for cleaning and project work. And as you can see, a lot of different things, a lot of different projects are taking place to improve user experience there. Just a few other items, on behalf of Human Services, the annual back-to-school program is wrapping up this week. Eighty-five children have received school supplies and support for back-to-school clothing. And I'm very excited about that. I want to thank all members of the, the community for their generosity and the difference that they've made to families in Mansfield that need the help. Recruitment is underway for the full-time youth services prevention specialist position that was funded in this year's budget. And of course, the classification of the new position was acted on by the council at the last meeting. So looking forward to working swiftly through that recruitment and, and finding the right individual to fill that key vacancy. The Celebrate Mansfield Festival coming up September 27th, but want to make sure that any would-be vendors, organizations, crafters, anybody interested in tabling knows that the registration deadline is coming up this Friday, August 15th. So additional details can be found on the website, but this festival itself is Saturday, September 27th. And then I think finally, well, two more notes. I want to make sure to recognize Captain Ryan Hawthorne. He's officially retired from Mansfield Fire and Emergency Services, when one includes Captain Hawthorne's service to the town through Mansfield Volunteer Fire Company, 36 years of service, which is a pretty impressive run. So I want to thank him for his dedicated service to the town and wish him the best in his retirement. And the water treatment system, which I know we've talked quite a little bit about, about the water treatment system at Mansfield Elementary School, a more detailed kind of step-by-step accounting of what needs to happen from today forward, basically. This is pulled together with help from Connecticut Water, all the final steps in the process of getting the system operational and getting the system ready for state inspection and state inspection and approval. And we believe in just a couple of weeks, we'll have the system operational. Obviously, it'll take several months. The exact number of months is unknown. It's highly variable before the system achieves the copper mitigation result it's intended to. But the system should be fully operational, hopefully right for the, right for the start of school. And then Bassett Bridge Road, I know a lot of people are excited that that project is done. Final paving is complete and the line striping has been applied as well. And I appreciate everybody's patience, not just on Bassett Bridge Road, but other projects that we have going on through town as we improve our roads and infrastructure. So, thank you.
Mr. Shaken?
Thanks. Couple of questions. First, on the standard, you talked about how involved the housing building department has been and making sure that they're ready for move-in, and I think everyone appreciates it. Have the owners or staff been in touch with the resident troopers' office about traffic control as they move everyone in? It's my understanding that that's going to happen over a much more compressed timeline than might otherwise happen with an established place. And so there might be some traffic issues on the couple of days when the residents are planning on moving in.
Right, so, and thanks, I was actually, I intended to mention that from my report. So my understanding in talking with, with Sergeant King is that personnel have been secured by Landmark Properties and the cost is being borne by, by Landmark to have the troopers there on August 15th and 16th, so the first two days, basically, that the leases are starting and that they, they've come up with a scheme, a one-way flow of traffic where folks will enter from the south and exit to the north. Obviously, there might be some fine tuning between day one and two, based on the, the day one experience, but that's, that's the plan now. And then of course, as is typical during, I'll just say like the rest of Yukon move-in, which is happening a week later, the Oaks, et cetera, all, all the usual collaboration between our resident troopers, state police in general, and, and Yukon PD to ensure public safety while move-ins taking place throughout town.
So we're going to have an influx of 13,000 people over the course of seven days?
We always do.
Always do. We survived it.
My, my other, my other question, or more of a suggestion, you mentioned the shutdown week at the community center. And I just have a quick suggestion that we think about finding another week during the summer next year and in following years to do it. We always seem to do it during the one week of summer when there are no summer camps, directly before school starts. And so it's probably the week where most, where any family that's been using any of our local summer camps, including the town camp, would look to find something to do at the community center during the day and find that it is closed. And so even if we did it at the end of July, it might work a little bit better. It might be more complicated because I know staff are dedicated to running Camp Mansfield, but I've run into that issue in the past and will remember not to this year, but it would be nice.
All right, duly, duly noted. I do believe it's sort of a longstanding tradition of that week, but I hear where you're coming from and, and all the reasons that you're citing, and I'll be happy to talk to Director O'Keefe about that.
Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, for your report. Couple of questions on, on the standard. It looks like they're going to be moving in Friday and Saturday?
Yeah, the 15th and 16th.
That's planned. We have all the COs ready?
This week. So they've been doing basically unit by unit and floor by floor, but the certificates of occupancy will be issued at a building level because the building permits were taken out on a building by building level. And so to my knowledge, while this may change starting as early as tomorrow, I, I don't believe that COs, any COs have been issued for any specific buildings yet, but that all has to happen this week. Then of course, there's the certificate of zoning compliance as well, the planning and development department's piece, and then various OSHA and state DOT approvals as well. So there's a lot that has to happen this week procedurally.
The certificate of zoning compliance is, I believe, was stipulated, had some stipulations of some bonds, of some issues. I think they had to post some bonds for the retention bonds. Do they have work they have to do, like scrape out the bottom or what's, there was a term they used for that?
Yeah, I don't have all the details. I believe you're right when you talk about one particular performance bond in particular, that there's some issues that have to be resolved. Those types of issues don't hold up. The issuance of the certificate of zoning compliance is just things that have to be remedied on a going-forward basis and, and the town, it's not something you want to do, but would, would, you know, call the bond if, if basically the developer wasn't, wasn't getting the work done themselves.
One of the areas of concern that I actually noticed up there is behind the garage that abuts the wetland of Cedar Swamp. There, I don't know if that's a retention pond, but it's retaining water and there's water right up to the garage. Algae's growing on the wall of the garage because there's so much water if that's a retention pond. If it's not, you could, you know, I find it hard to believe that you could even build that close to, it's really on the water. Is that going to be an issue?
My understanding, I'd be happy to gather more information and share it with the council, but my understanding is where you're talking about, it's frankly not unlike, or somewhat analogous to the issues you ran into at the elementary school where there was a retention basin that basically wasn't draining as swiftly as it was supposed to, it was retaining water. And I don't know if we know at this point with the standard, what exactly issues are that are contributing to that, whether it's the material that's used, compaction of the existing material that's not allowing it to drain. But I, my understanding is that it's, it's, it's well-known and documented and something that will be, will ultimately be rectified.
So that's actually on, part of the bonding issue, that, that particular?
Yeah, so again, I'll, I'll need to gather more information from planning and development from Jen Kaufman or staff, but my understanding is that again, when they do their field visits, these are all documented issues and it's not, it's not performing as designed right now.
And the 750 square feet, of 750 linear feet of sidewalk that's missing because The Villages haven't started the project. What's going on with The Villages? You have an ETA on when that, we're going to break ground and maybe get that sidewalk in for real?
Yeah, so this spring was when, so, so it's been, I think the project and, and the, the ownership and the developer, I think they've been sort of rethinking or reimagining the project for, for some time. So it wasn't really until pretty well, pretty deep into the spring, so one of our more recent meetings with the developer, that we were told, the town was told for the first time, because they had the permits in place to move forward, that they weren't going to be breaking ground this construction season. So up until, I'll say, April or May of this year, our expectation, based on the previous communication, the plans that they shared, was that they were going to be breaking ground this construction season. And so our hope was that we would be able to work with them, work with the standard, work with everybody involved to, as needed, sequence the construction so that regardless of when in the construction sequence, they originally planned to have the trail constructed, that adjustments as needed could be made to have that prioritized at the front end. So there was one of the first things that was done to allow for the connectivity from the standard through The Villages property to the Four Corners. But then they told us that their intent, that they weren't going to be breaking ground this, this construction season. And that's when we had to start thinking of other options and that's what we've been talking regularly with, with Yukon and others about.
Okay, and are they saying next construction season?
Again, I want to be careful how much information or what information I share because, you know, I think, you know, as you can appreciate conversations that developer shares with the planning and development office, you know, ideas that they have and thoughts they have, I mean, some of that, there's an expectation, I think, of privacy on their end where that won't be shared publicly. But I, I think, you know, we've expressed to them the importance that something, quote unquote, permanent be in place, if not, because of, because the reality is, this, this school year, the construction season has, has been missed, that the town and Yukon share the desire to see a permanent workable trail in place for the next academic year. And so what I can say is that the town has made its position very well-known to the, to the developer of The Villages project, that we need to have safe pedestrian passage and how can we make that happen? And if they're not in a position to make that happen as part of their project, there are other avenues that the town would, would potentially explore.
Have they thought about any traffic calming measures with the road itself to slow traffic down in that area? Or is it pretty much going to be the way it's?
Yeah, I mean, so like I alluded to briefly earlier, talking with DOT about possible signage to alert motorists to, you know, this is an area that you should always obviously be paying attention when you drive, but I need to be paying that much more attention because the signage is telling me there, there could be people walking in the area. And then also exploring the, the possibility of delineators or some form of delineation using the recently striped bike lane to, to utilize that narrow road edge, if you will, as, as a, I'll say pedestrian corridor, but it would be a sort of a share the corridor situation. So pedestrians, scooters, bikes, there's not a lot of width to that, but. bikes, there's not a lot of width to that, but obviously, we want to prevent people from walking in the road.
And we lack sidewalks and lighting as well, too, right?
Yeah, so lighting right now, there's no, there's no lighting, so I don't have a site plan in front of me, I believe, and I'll double-check this with Jen Kaufman, I believe that the path, the approved design through The Villages property, I believe, and I will confirm this, and if I'm wrong, I'll certainly let the council know, but I believe there is lighting associated with that path. So none of the things we're talking about in terms of temporary solutions involving the edge of the road, none of that includes lighting at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shaken.
Just to clarify, you're talking about potentially, we've all walked down this block in New York City, when there's construction and there's jersey barriers that direct you to a portion of the street that is inaccessible to cars because of those jersey barriers, and then you go back to the sidewalk, is that kind of what you're envisioning here, that we would put out under the new, in the new stripe, in the new bike lane, instead of just having it be a visual barrier for cars, to have some physical barrier so that people could traverse 195 in that few hundred feet more safely?
Yeah, so the, I can't tell you the exact linear distance where there's a guardrail, basically, so there's a bike lane marked where there's a guardrail, and then right where the bike lane, basically, it tapers off into nothing, where you pick up another travel lane, there's essentially a grass gravel shoulder above the curb, and, you know, even though it's not an official trail, I think the expectation is, knowing human nature, that that will become a well-worn trail off the road surface. I'll call it, guesstimating here, maybe 150 feet plus or minus, where there's a guardrail or cabling, where the road is narrow and it kind of drops off precipitously down into wetland. That stretch, again, plus or minus 150 feet, I think is where there's most concern now, because there's no area off the road, and there's very limited area sort of on the road surface, even though it's striped. And, because obviously, a stripe isn't going to prevent a car from going over the stripe, it's just, it's a visual cue. We have talked about jersey barriers, the issue, and I don't want to speak for DOT, because we are asking, we are quite literally presenting DOT with a series of requests, asking them to respond to it, so they will be responding to our sort of formal memorandum here soon. But I think we're contemplating that we might hear from DOT, that because jersey barriers, you know, they're flared at the bottom, it could be upwards of a couple of feet at the base, that if you centered a jersey barrier over the, say, the bike lane stripe, you'd have a portion of that going into the travel lane, the car lane, and then a portion of it going into, so the width of a jersey barrier might cause a problem. So then, if that's the case, if DOT won't allow jersey barriers, basically following that, even on a temporary basis, which obviously would provide a much safer solution, because it would prevent a car from-
A real barrier.
A real barrier. You see, whether it's interstate exits or otherwise, the, they're like a synthetic delineator that doesn't provide, like, physical separate, like, a car will go over it, but it's a very prominent physical, so you see-
It won't be fun.
What's that?
It won't be fun.
Right, no, so it's-
It will cause damage to your car, even if it will also cause damage to the person on the other side.
Yeah, you just willy-nilly drive over it, but obviously, if a car, if an accident happened and the car drifted through, intention of the motorist, it's not going to stop a vehicle the way a barrier would, but it's, again, it's a deterrent, because you don't want to hit it with your car, and it's much more visually prominent than just a stripe on the road, so, and it takes up very little space, I mean, they're very narrow, and they would go right down the line. So I think of the options we've considered, what we are anticipating DOT might respond to on temp, I think we think that one might have more legs, but we'll see. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions to the Town Manager? Seeing none, thank you. Reports and comments of council members? I have nothing in particular to report, anybody else? Mr. Lutrico?
I have a comment, going back to the discussion on the affordable housing. We're always talking about UConn. I would really like to see a senior member of the Board of Trustees come to the Town Council, because the administration of UConn doesn't have the authority to do most of the stuff that we're talking about with any help from them. So can the Town Council or the Town Manager make the invitation to the Board of Trustees to talk to us about what UConn can do?
Might be something for the Town Gown Committee to try to initiate.
Well, I'd like to see it happen, I mean, if I don't see it happen, I'm going to make the phone calls myself, as a citizen, whatever, but-
We do have contacts on the board who have expressed their interest in working with the town, so we can-
Well, I'd like to see them, I'd like to see a member of the Board of Trustees show up, you know, action is worth more than a lot of chatter, but thank you for allowing me that time.
Council committees, finances postponed, committee on committees hasn't met, personnel, everybody has received the Town Manager's self-evaluation, and everybody has received access to the survey for the Town Manager's evaluation. You have this week to complete this. We are cutting off access to the survey on the 18th, and everybody's received a reminder, and I've also sent out an email that says that if you want to make an initial stab and save that, and then come back to make revisions later, you are now able to do that. So it's really important that everybody pay attention to this and get the work done. I think that's the major thing from personnel. Petitions, requests, communications, any comment on anything here? I think we need to do something about Ms. Katula's request, and I don't know whether this would, I think we probably need to put this on a future agenda.
I agree, I was going to pull Item D for a little discussion, I know she tried in 2007, 2011, circumstances have changed a little since then.
And I think her request has changed a little since then, too, as well.
Okay, yeah, and so in order to do that, to have it put on agenda, doesn't he have to put the request to inland wetlands and the other committees first, or not? Do we need opinions from them before we put it on an agenda?
I'll check the status with Planning and Development staff to see, get an update on to what extent any of the committees that Ms. Katula has referenced have been consulted with this. I know part of the, most recently, the communication happened to coincide with, well, first plant leave that I had, and then our town attorney's been on a two-week vacation, he's just returning in a few days, so neither I nor our town attorney and staff have been able to confer on this, and so I did provide, within a week or so, of the most recent correspondence, a sort of quick interpretation that, based on the information provided, and based on the reasons that were previously outlined, going back in the winter and spring, why the, it seemed advantageous for the town to retain ownership, why the latest request didn't seem to change the town's position on that, but certainly, we'll be talking with the town attorney in the next few days about it, once he's back.
I don't think this needs to be a rush job, I think we could put it off to the second meeting in September at the earliest, particularly if other committees have to be consulted, so, but I do want to have an opportunity for the council to either change or reaffirm its earlier decision.
I agree with the mayor.
Okay, then there are internal referrals, which are proposed changes to planning and zoning regulations, which you should take a look at. Anything else for future agendas? Then, a motion to adjourn?
Actually, it's probably about time that we hear from the School Building Committee again.
This, no, there's not, there's nothing for the School Building Committee to report-
There's plenty of projects going on, right? I think we need an update.
The School Building Committees will provide updates when they have something to report, and there isn't anything at the moment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Coleman moves, there, second, Mr. Lutrico, second. All those in favor of adjourned, please raise your hand, we are adjourned.